Road crossings installed there. So when riders approach, they can hit that button there and it'll flash and then cars will see them. Looks like somebody getting hit. So we looked into the cost. I actually talked to Brett Rustnok, who's a senior civil engineer for the city of Keene. And he said, they just put that similar type of style in at the roundabout at Walmart, where they just put that roundabout in. And he said the cost was twelve to fifteen thousand dollars installed for each one of those. So they're solar driven, push button activated. I believe at a meeting maybe a year ago, I was asked to look into motion detect. And I asked Brett about that and he said the only place that they ever did it was at Keene State College Winchester Street there. And I went and checked it out and one of them wasn't working. So I think they're very susceptible to damage. And especially on the rail trail where we have the snowmobiles come through with their graders and we have equipment. The committee felt it was too risky to put in motion detect. So let's just have the push button. So and then we would have to put paint on the street for the crossing. So we'd like to use the MAST grant to pay for this. And I know the town was thinking of perhaps using that for something else. And we talked about this about a year ago, using it for this purpose. So I'm here to lobby to use that grant to pay for these three road crossings. Pedestrian bicycle road crossings, the three masted road crossings, the Yashua Road crossings. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I want to go back to the motion part. What is the main reason you wouldn't want the motion? Cause I'm picturing people going by a snowmobiles. Do they have to get off there then to go press the button? Do they have to get off their machine to go press the button? Or they're just gonna be, where they're gonna pull up alongside, reach over and hit a button? How does that work?
They would have to push the button in order to activate the flashing lights.
But I'm asking, do they stop their machine? Do they physically get off and go push the button?
Most likely yes. I don't know exactly where they're gonna be located versus where the snowmobile could ride and whether they can reach out over and push the button or not.
Yeah. Well, I was just being concerned, but how many people are gonna use the button? Versus, we know what's gonna happen, the lights are gonna go and there's motion. And you weigh down the fact of that it would break down more, the motion one? Is that the reason you don't want to do the motion?
Correct. And the one in Keene State College, one of them's already not working.
Yeah, cause I go by those nice, you know, so the people just walk out and then they flash, right?
So, right, we're concerned about how long will they last before that's not even working and now you have nothing. And then the cost is higher too. I think it was another four to five grand per crossing to have motion detect.
Snowmobiles are probably, I would say, the least important part of having lights though, because they already have headlights. So a vehicle's more likely to see that. It's the biker or walker on this time of day.
Right, right.
Where there's more usage. Not to say the snowmobiles couldn't use them, but I think to your point, they're not gonna get off. A couple of them are gonna be, probably not gonna be able to use them. But you can see the headlights, so you at least put your camera on the corner. You're more likely to see a light. They probably come on fast and they will, they ask for, I think they still go very good speeds.
Actually, that makes a lot more sense to me now that you've mentioned the bikers and the walkers. You know, I was just heading my head as he mentioned snowmobiles. So I was focused on just the snowmobile guy, but it's a lot of other activity.
Oh, yeah. Runners, bikers, walkers.
Yeah, I was just curious, wouldn't, you know, this.
I, I personally don't know of any motion detect paid crossings on any rail trail in our region anywhere.
That answers my question.
The one in Goffstadt, which most of you probably have, but I've used, there's a couple of crossings and they have the ones where you press the button and it flashes the lights, so.
So it's push button, it's not motion detect?
How many do we need?
Three. Three sets for three crossings. So about forty-five thousand. The grant, I believe, is a hundred K this year.
Up to, yeah.
Up to a hundred thousand for the, for the MAST grant.
So the rub is the board had planned on applying for to extend the Route Thirty Two Sidewalk further south towards Town Hall. So we don't really, I mean, we could submit a vote about that pick, but normally they don't really compete against themselves. And that would be, would be looking for, you know.
We wouldn't be looking for a difference between forty-five and a hundred.
It's probably looking for around a hundred. I didn't want to encourage him to go for it and then either compete against ourselves or have the board say no. He said he wanted to do that sidewalk extension, that's another. Maybe there's a way to try to find a rail trail crossings, some other way to continue to go with the sidewalk. Or you may say, anyway, you want to do the crossings and the way you know, the sidewalk, that's my take. I didn't want to send him off to work on something and then have him say no.
Yeah.
Have you investigated any grants for either, either of those projects, other grants? Safety and creation.
I don't know, not aware of any outcome in that, but. If there's any.
I haven't looked into any of the grant for the crossings.
How soon do you want to have this in effect? Do you want to do that this year?
Uh, the MAST grant round, uh, the deadline, I think, is October twentieth or twenty-fifth. So the idea was to submit before the application deadline, which is end of October, third group of October.
I'm not familiar enough with the sidewalks, so that you're talking about.
So it's like the sidewalk kind of ends abruptly between Grange and Wilcox School, kind of cross from Town Hall and goes into the cover bridge, but we extended it further south towards Town Hall Road.
And you would, we were hoping to use that money to do the sidewalk. That's what we're gonna do.
Both projects, half the sidewalks. Fifty-five up to the sidewalks and thirty-five. Yes, we could split the projects.
What is that side?
Split it. Instead of going for a hundred for the sidewalk, go for fifty-five for the sidewalk and forty-five for the rest.
And do as much as we can on the sidewalk. I think the, I think the lights are a great idea, cause that road is crazy. When people drive fast on that road, you come around the corner, a biker with a deck has two kids following one of them or something falling behind. I think it's important, myself. Thank you. Anything else?
You're all set. Okay, so what, so what did I do?
Say yes.
Oh, okay.
So it's, since Stefan for the money.
Okay, I'll stop just to tell him. All right, great, thank you.
It might happen at the office.
We might not have a choice if we apply for a hold. Usually, well, we have a line for two, so I'm gonna say for sure. I suspect that's what they do is they, they rate all the projects and then say this is one, these are the highest.
Well, that one's definitely priority.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's been interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, unless, unless Stefan wants to jump in this ten minute window and try to accomplish this, uh, it's code enforcement. So Robyn's approaching. Pink Fifty-Nine, he has a memo here on, uh, conservatively saved up for his club at one point five, looking for research. He's done.
Josh, Stefan.
I dropped. When did the road actually come into being for the town? The town voted?
By my research, March of seventy-four.
So it was private roads prior to that?
Yeah. And according to resident counts, the range was in use well before the road was there.
So it was in use before it becomes subdivided, parts and lots?
Yeah, I think it was the sort of thing where you just had his friends and family use his property for shooting. And you have the standard gravel pit behind it, so it was essentially safe.
Questions?
Do you want to give the, uh, the one minute synopsis just while?
Yeah. Cool. I would hear it.
Absolutely. So essentially, at the time that the, the club moved to Swansea, there were no restrictions on uses in that district. It was referred to as one of the general districts. And the only restrictions on land use there pertain to highways, like, um, setbacks and structure use juxtaposed into set highways. So they really didn't have to go before the planning or zoning board to get approval. And we have record that after zoning regulations developed, they went forward for building permits, um, special exception from the TBA. So it seemed as though they weren't complying.
From our records. Essentially, they were grandfathered not conforming.
Exactly.
As, and the, the use of the permit technologies and town was aware of it and it grabbed the building permits.
And that was in E force.
And it's no more, more activity than it was back then. I mean, the, the complaints that we're getting is that there's more, uh, more members and it's growing. And so there's gonna be no control of that at all.
I have not received reports of increased activity or change of activity.
Yeah.
I have been there once before.
Yeah.
It seemed as though they were using the land within the timeframe that they said they're supposed to use the land, so.
Yeah, we kind of figured that, right? You didn't write it, didn't you? Yeah, but I, I can understand on the other end, you know, the people, it's, you know, I've been there on a Sunday. It's just twenty-four seven, you know? And I understand they moved there, they knew there was some things there, I get it, but. Well, we needed to, we needed to get these people answers and you did a great job. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would they save the concerns?
Well, that's what I question too, with the roads being so close and, you know, the issue, Michaelson stuff is there. You know, by law, I think there's a certain distance to shooting them.
Correct. Yeah, I'm not making safety assumptions or anything else. Cheshire County has a shooting violation. I mean, wanting to go take a look at that and see if there's any safety issues or violations.
We have complaints and that type of issue. We should go to the lawyers.
Well, I think, not just, well, they want to do the, sorry, research now, but I think you could do it some sort of protest. You talk somebody to the road, people walking on it, but I think that's, there's an evidence that's issued. I don't know, but that was an aspect of the process.
Do you see any downfall by having him take a look to see if there's any safety issues?
I'll see him go.
Be happy to be, but it was.
Billy does.
I, I would think you want to park the border first before we start authorizing something. Just, I'd prefer to have that guidance before we open the camera. Yeah, for savings.
In compliance. You're better.
Yeah. You, you don't care to have a range or not?
To, to mine now, I was told that they are, but I, I can't back that up.
You were just told that they are.
Right.
You could go on the hour, if I can find that out.
Oh, sure.
Absolutely.
The only health and safety things that I read about pertain to DES and water contamination. And just from what's in the records at Town Hall, it seems as though they're still in compliance with DES. They have a remediation plan that is ongoing.
Personally, I'd encourage you to check the legal first, before you start going on. You were asked to check into the zoning aspect.
Correct.
If you were in compliance, you determined that their use predated zoning, because it was in the general zone at the time. And when zoning came in, it became grandfathered not conforming. You presented information that based on permits, the various boards or the community gave the, or administration gave the permits. I think before you go any further, really will check with, with legal, cause you're, you're essentially potentially trespassing on personal. Some good outlaws. It's just a phone call.
No, no, I, I'm hearing your sentiment.
You can come back next, not next week, but the ninth. I do that.
I'd like to see that followed up on, but cause I, my concern is something, it's an accident happened and somebody on that street or something. And I don't want to be sitting in this seat and have this brought in front of me if we didn't check out the safety. Somebody, somebody gets hurt and then, uh, I'd like to see us follow through with that. See if we can't get permission to have Mike go and check the safety. At least, at least if they're gonna do it, we can say, these, these are, you know, things that we have to address since, you know, there's people living there now. We have to make some changes, you know, for safety, right?
So they came in after we found that they can't use the house.
They what?
They built the house after the fact that the range is already there. We got to tell them they can't use their house because of state. That's the danger.
I just disagree. I just think we should check out safety. All right. And I'm not saying to do it, but help checking out what Brett said. I, I just think I'd like to see it, you follow through, go to law and find out if we're legal to do it. And then, yeah, I think we should do it, that's all I'm saying.
You can always call up the person that the board asked. If you need permission.
Um.
I will talk to the town council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stefan.
I love Stefan.
Eight, six o'clock. Go for the public hearing. According to the law, Article fourteen passed at the two thousand four annual town meeting, RSA forty-one, form fourteen dash A. For the selected during the regularly scheduled meetings, we'll hold the following public hearing for the town regarding possible acceptance by the town of a donation of approximately three point three acres from Southwestern Community Services. The land is from the parcel of twenty-eight Main Street, map one, ten, lot seven. This donation is part of a boundary line adjustment approved by the planning board on August eighth, twenty twenty-four. The hearing will be held as follows, tonight, September twenty-fifth at six P M. And again, on October ninth at six P M. And we'll say that if you have anything you want to comment on this, if you can identify yourself for the minutes, that'd be great. We'll open the public hearing.
Before we get to the public hearing, I, could I just ask one clarifying question? As I, as I read this, it appears that there's an existing ordinance. We're gonna modify it as a campaign. So which one is this?
This is on the lot, landing at Old Fire Station.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jumped a gun on that, didn't I? I'm looking up a word because I was going to do it before.
He was a synopsis.
We're starting listening here.
Well, look at the synopsis.
Yeah, so with that, with that opportunity, uh, so what we're talking about is actually just down the street here. Fire Station Three, which everyone's probably familiar with, right next to, uh, the Thompson Cover Bridge, is currently on a very small lot, about a third of the acre. And when we put on an addition over the last couple of years in fact, to add additional storage space, because the lot was so small, the percentage of the building that covers the lot is so large, we ran into a couple little hiccups in terms of, um, some state permitting, which is what started the conversation about, it'd be really nice if we had some, you know, a little bit of breathing room. How can we have any plans to do it? But just to provide a little bit of breathing room. And working with our partners at Southwestern Community Services, Keyvow specifically, they were, they were open to that opportunity. The project's been there long enough that some of their funding restrictions are loosened such that they have the ability to, um, potentially donate some land. And so that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is that donating approximately three point three acres. Here, a little handout, you can see a little sketch here which shows, um, the fire station building is what's here. The existing lot has just got a little square around it. And it's out all this riverfront, riverfrontage and then the new lines have come out here, so. It's really giving some river buffer, which could be nice for some hiking trails potentially down the road. There's kind of an existing parking area that's already used, so that would be on a town property. There's drainage, uh, catchment area that would be on town property that went in as part of the Main Street project. And it just gives some additional flexibility around that station. So that's all this here is discussing. And the only costs to the town are some, uh, transactional costs. So here they have, um, some survey work done, um, kind of D draw, so should be under, under five thousand dollars for the transaction costs.
Questions or comments? Can we bring them up, both a public hearing? Yes.
Yes, we had another public hearing. It had ten to fourteen days of the project proposal, uh, with the exceptions. And it did go before the planning board, uh, boundary line adjustment for their comment on the acquisition. And it went for the conservation commission.
This might take over where it is.
My closet? I guess the votes is, so.
Just as you mentioned, beautiful piece of property for a lot, yeah. Not a long bit. I know it's unreal.
Let's go to trail check.
Well, there might be some opportunities that you can bring that away. It's just to me, that possibly may be useful.
We have ten more minutes before our next public hearing, so. About zoo business, special event permit, twenty-four, dash twenty, cemetery candle, flag four.
We have the opportunity of the cemetery section that our president said, we've had some discussions. So this is a private event that, uh, it's late, like, to build it. Cemetery is, she discussed it with him and he said, it's not clear, the cemetery trustees, so really it should go before them. So we'd be looking for approval from the board for use to own property and then approve the special. Liam, would you want to speak to it?
I'd like to.
Will Josh make an appearance?
Since I made a review, I'm sorry, something. I'm not in real favor of my times that have suffered, but that's me. Maybe I'm old. But it just lends itself to hard times that people walk through. Maybe take the old way out and assume hopefully not coming to something like this, but, uh, I would like a lot more time to work with it. It's not a big deal as far as, it's only taking the top half of the cemeteries where they're then. But like I told her, it's not true. My boss is two members of the cemetery. I don't think it's worth it, but, uh.
Your chair has been shared on second, right? Unless, yeah.
Six thirty, eight thirty?
Yes, that's what it says here.
Given at five thirty, it would be dark.
So you put it dark at six thirty.
I was over at, this document is dark at five, five thirty.
It's on Terry with that.
I'm on six thirty.
What are the problems with the next cap?
The roots.
The what?
The roots of roots.
I mean, uh, I'm using foot, foot, triple, still.
Just, just so that they march, they walk. This event, they walk in the event, that what they do?
They gotta go from different spots within the cemetery. A fairly new route, but we will, I think, I'll have to go to us, this, this don't all, which, I think, is well viewed. But they use the direction, so. It's, it's good.
And they're hoping to get some people and character.
She's supposed to have lights, you know? It's got a history of that tour, you know, so I like that and, uh, and some stories of, you know. Interesting. Other places do it, they do it in the day.
Do you know why she wants to do that night?
Cause she found a place to do the night. And it's, and it's cool. And again, she, she stresses the fact that it's not, it's scary. And it will not, but what I'm saying, she's just talking the history of the, you know, there for a few. The town is, as we know it, when they had the league, that's the big difference. Back, it's going back to do the search. It's kind, kind of strange for us.
Gary, give a comment or question?
Somebody on my side will say.
See if I can unmute my microphone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Lee. Um, hey, thanks for coming tonight. I just wanted you to, wanted to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions. I did walk this cemetery twice this past weekend. And I feel like I do have a safe route, um, that would not have a tripping hazard. And I certainly understand Lee's concerns. My goal is to teach the town the history of Swansea, which is amazing. Like, we drive through the Cresson Bridge all the time, we see the name Cresson. But even though I grew up in Swansea, I never realized that he was, his son, Thomas Cresson Junior, was kidnapped by the Indians, marched off to Canada twenty miles a day. And so there's just so many interesting stories that are in our cemeteries. Revolutionary War soldiers that fought in the opening battles in that Bunker Hill. And, um, I'd love to be able to tell those stories. I can do it in the day if you would prefer. But there are many cemeteries around the country that do it safely at night and with battery operated candlelight. It's kind of a cool effect. It's interesting to do it that way, but up to you guys, so. You have any questions for me?
Would you be interested in doing it on like a Saturday early? Late afternoon, early evening, maybe at four?
Um, I could. I could. It would need to, I have a wed, I have a florist, I have a wedding on the twenty-fifth, so it'd need to be the following Saturday.
I would get into hunting season.
Right now, you're saying the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, which is a Tuesday, Wednesday?
So I'm saying the twenty-ninth with the thirtieth as a rain date.
Okay.
And I was trying not to interfere with football games and. And I was trying not to interfere with football games and other things that might be going on around the town on a weekend. It's kind of why I was picking a weeknight.
Here's a great comment. A lot of fun. Motion made seconded, authorize use of town property and approve special event 24-20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So I just mentioned a slide. Since we have a few minutes before the public hearing, just get a little bit of background, might answer some questions that folks have. So this has been something that the select board has been working on for better part of two years. As the, you know, bridges have been hit before and we received concerns, I think it was last spring or summer, the board said, well, why don't we, why don't we put cameras on them and then we can catch the people that damaged them? And I said, I don't think we can do that. And we checked with the Hampshire Municipal Association and they said, no, you can't have cameras to monitor on, on the roads or bridges. You can have them on a building like here, but you can't have them where the traveling public is, is driving. And they said, well, let's try to change the law. And I said, I don't know how that's gonna work, but we can try it. And we approached our state representatives. Barry Faulkner helped sponsor the bill and Jennifer Rhodes helped testify in favor. And so they filed legislation to allow the installation of cover, cameras on the coverbridges. And in parallel, just coincidentally, other towns were also working on this issue because they were having problems with it as well. And increased, they had filed legislation to increase the fines if vehicles that were not appropriate went over the bridges, either too high, too heavy, or towing, they damaged it. So it just was kind of a happy combination that they were also working on that legislation. And we went up and testified in favor and filed letters. Mason Thorn filed a letter as well. So we give her credit, it's all we had to pay for it. And both the House, the Senate approved it and the governor signed the legislation. So we're now able to install cameras as of September 1st. And we're able to increase the fines as of January 1st, 2025. So that's, it's a little bit timing wise clunky, which was kind of Bill's question. So what I've included in the handout that hopefully everyone got, if not, there's probably still a few back there. There's the current ordinance, which has current, got a watermark on it. And then there's the proposed ordinance. So other than a few kind of organizational and typo changes, really the only changes are on that second page, which is where we added in the fines and the cameras. So ironically, a lot of the feedback we've gotten is about the weight damage, which is three tons, which is not changing. That ordinance is that consistent. And it's not something we set. It's set by the state, the State Department of Transportation Bridge Bureau, inspects the bridges periodically, and they set the regulations regarding the posting lines. The other piece I want to mention briefly, especially as it relates to Crescent, is in terms of signage. Because that is a state road, the town does not control the signage on that road. And we did have Frank Winderbringer from the DOT Local District came in about a month ago, that was the board, to discuss signage. And he connected us with folks in the traffic bureau. And we emailed after that meeting, hadn't heard. They emailed me back at like 5:00 today, so I haven't had a chance to read it. But we are making progress on the signage. One of the questions was yield versus stop, no yield. So we are looking into that. And we're the first town that's trying to install the, install the camera aspect, which also has a signage requirement. So because we are kind of a guinea pig, it is, it is going to take some coordinating. So obviously we didn't make this September 1st, but we were able, able to install them. But we are working as quickly as possible. And the board has allocated funding for installing a camera on Crescent to start there as a travel period. So we have three minutes.
Okay.
I think they covered most of it.
It'd be 6:15, all over the public here. Regarding proposed changes to town highway regulation ordinance, like I said, takes effect January 1st, 2025, increase in tons, and authorizing use of cameras to identify vehicles that damage the bridge. So proposed ordinance, we're a little town hall, we're at Swansea National, not bad. Again, if you could identify yourself before you speak for the minutes, that would be great. All for the public here. Brian?
Comments, questions, statements? Do the statement think that the cameras going up is a good idea? I'm not sure why we're doing one when we have four bridges. Why don't we just do them all? But that was the statement, rhetorical, if you will. This weight is coming up at the coffee houses around town as well, because the 1,500 pickup truck, this crew cab's already two and a half ton empty. So the three ton limit kind of got people, even though it's been three tons for 200 years, they're, I don't think we're in the position to go ticketing people that drive through there with their pickup trucks. And I don't think that's the goal. But the in tow and RVs and all that other stuff is. So since another officer just gave her notice and another one's about to give his notice and we're short on cops, we put the cameras up, what are we gonna do with it? Because if we don't ticket, it's not gonna mean a darn thing to anybody.
And what is to your point? Do you think the funding is a big issue as far as the number of cameras? We aren't a budget year, so next year. We hear some others.
Could you clarify what the scope of the cameras is? Because we don't have enforcement power with the cameras.
Cameras can only be used, we can only retain the data for seven days. They can only be used to identify the cause of damage. So they can't, they can't be looking on there to see if overweight truck went over. It's only for the damage. We'll see the damage. We go out, we check the data on the camera, and then we are able to go. So it's not, it's, they're totally, they're separate. Like I said, it's a coincidence that the fees, a good coincidence, but they're unrelated. We can't use the cameras for the fines for unless there's damage.
So like those, would be RSA for electronic ticketing, it's not weapons, but. But I believe the law also puts in there that if damage is found on the bridge, maybe that's not really visible, like broken structure, structural piece, the camera could identify a heavy vehicle, maybe it did. And that, there are fines that include, the bridge has to be closed for repairs. That person's liable for it and their insurance. That follows along down right over here.
Yeah, Mark Johnson. Just regarding the signage, I think it's really important to direct drivers that are trying to get to the high school with a load of footsie's or something, that are from West Springfield, how to get around. I think that truck detour signage is really important so that we don't end up in the situation. I mean, you mentioned the roads are state roads, so we may have a problem posting at each entry road, bridges, whether there's two or three to each bridge that, you know, get people there. But I do think that that's an important thing to maybe discuss or think about.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Who, went through the list of Google Maps and everybody?
Oh, yes.
Was it Stephon?
I was thought I was supposed to remind you.
Oh, okay. So, believe it or not, Google didn't know we had restrictions on our.
That's sorry, that's shocking.
So now they do. And some of the other MapQuest and those, I saw a list that said a lot of them don't have that capability, so.
Right, that speaks to what I'm saying. Is that means folks come from out of town and are trying to get to somewhere on the other side of a bridge that they cannot cross. I think we need to help them before they get to that situation, have to drag back, hand them up over, you know, up by Matthews Road or something. And to try and help those folks not get in the situation to help us out so the bridge is on.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Rick wrote the show. I live right across from the fire department on 35 Main Street, so I see the bridge all the time. I'm retired. I live right there. And some of the stuff I've seen on the bridge in, going on 18 years now, has been pretty horrific as far as accidents that have happened there. And I think the biggest thing of all that should happen to these bridges is there should be a stop sign on each side. I mean, and, and a warning before the stop sign. And that's gonna slow everybody down. It's gonna stop the accidents. And then, when they stop and see the sign, oh, nothing in tow, because most of them are going 30, 40 miles an hour over the bridge all the time. And I see it day in, day out. I've watched trailers unhitched and hit cars coming in on the other side. I've watched trucks go through with trailers that have forklift that took out the top of the bridge on one side, kept going, took out the brick, top of the bridge on the other side. And it's constant. I see trailers constantly going over. I see RVs going over, big, big vehicles. And I think it's very important to have a stop sign on each, especially this one here where there's children playing and the apartment's right behind the fire apartment all the time. And there's a lot of traffic going in there. And it's horrific sometimes. And I think our biggest asset would be to have stop signs on each side of the bridges. It would slow everybody down, slow the traffic down to 25 miles an hour instead of 30. And maybe we can contain a lot of the stuff that's going on.
Valerie Cox.
I'm sorry, name again?
Valerie Cox.
Thank you.
Another problem is the people who tailgate other vehicles across the bridge. So if your vehicle is less than three tons, their vehicles may be less than three tons. Together, they're over. So the tailgating is.
One of the times.
Yeah, the tailgating's a big problem.
The stop sign would take care of that.
Yes, I, Kyle Proto, Eaton Road.
I'm sorry, can you, sorry, I have to clear.
Kyle Proto.
Thank you.
I, is there a clearer, the three ton, is that the curb weight of the vehicle or the gross vehicle weight rating? Is it, I believe it's written here as a GBRW. And that makes a significant difference on what.
Right.
Vehicles can go across that bridge. So is it based off the curb weight or the gross vehicle weight rating?
Yes, we have to talk to the state about it, suspect everyone's that host.
Because I mean, an empty pickup truck is under, obviously if they got a ton of pellets in the back, they're gonna be over.
Yeah.
So, but I, that's my question, yes. Because it would make a big difference.
Yeah.
So.
Lorraine.
Hi, Lorraine Johnson. So did, just to be clear, clear, did you say that if a, if a camera sees a bridge, sees a vehicle go over the bridge and knock out some boards, you can't, even if you get the, see the whole thing, you can't?
That's what you can use the camera to identify the vehicle.
You can.
Right, but it's just for a vehicle being oversized.
Right.
Or overweight.
Oh.
If there's no damage noted on the bridge, you can't use a camera to identify the vehicle. Yes, sir.
Gary Proto, send him your drive.
I'm sorry.
Gary Proto.
Thank you.
Send him your drive, keep Swansea. I think one of the biggest things with a tow is the sign's so small.
Hmm.
It's this big.
I agree.
You know, and it's right at the bridge. Have further, a couple more further down the road, too.
No, this one right by, right in my property, right on the corner across from the fire apartment. It's a fairly good sized one, but they're covered with tree limbs and brush the same as the one coming on the California Street. There's a sign there, but it's covered with brush from a tree. You can't even read it. So it's not doing anything useful.
More signage is the way to go. And I get the same question with my son on the gross weight. Where, where we going in curb or how we going in gross weight?
Steve Tenny, Eaton Road. Just a couple of comments about the, the ordinance as it's proposed. The way I read RSA 3139, which, which gives the town its, its authority for ordinances, is that's capped at $1,000 fine. The way we've copied the, the penalties from the new RSA, or the revised RSA, to indicate fines of $2,000, I don't think that would hold if the police department would charge it under the town ordinance. My recommendation would, would be to reword this whole ordinance and just reference the new RSA and the new penalties. Because God forbid if we wrote someone under the ordinance and they won, you wouldn't get your restitution either. It would be dropped. So.
I read it though, was it a lot of two parts? That one is for the overweight, oversized vehicle and the other one is.
It is, but the, it's the fine if the damage impedes the flow of traffic. So I don't, I'm not sure that legally the ordinance can, can have the fine up to $2,000 like that. I think it would be cleaner to just reference the RSA in the penalty section of this new ordinance. Because then again, if it's ever changed or repealed or whatever down the road, you would have to go through this process again. And with that, because this is so much clearer and actually gives the town much better standing, if my neighbor's towing his lawn tractor to Guyetts, why do we have the tow part of it in there? If someone's using a passenger car with a, a small landscaping trailer, they're now responsible. You have a lot of measures that they're responsible in, if they're a responsible driver, they can tow a small trailer through the bridge responsibly without having to go all through key.
No.
Almost like the end, because weren't you BPW on the tree spade, on the tree car? I just, does that one may have put in the nothing in tow for a gap?
That's one of the four, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand, it's just that people don't, trust me, I know what they're towing. I fully, I understand the concept of why it came to be. I, I was a resident when it happened. But it, it's kind of like making rules for everybody when only one person has a problem, right? So if we have a camera where we can identify the violator and charge that person and get our restitution back, maybe it's time to look at that for the responsible drivers in, in town. But, so, I would, I would reword the whole penalty section and just reference the RSA. I, I think it's cleaner. I think it's easier for the police department on whether they want to use the ordinance or the RSA to charge. And it's, it's just cleaner because most of your, most of our town ordinances are, are $50 or $100 anyway. Kind of goes out of our norms for our, our other ordinances that we have in town. So it's just my two cents. Thank you.
Good idea. Nothing to tow?
Yeah. Now, I did want to speak to this because that's 18 years of working public works. Those bridges are hit every year, multiple times, the three of them. The one slight bridge, which was a bridge on steroids built in 2001, built with 14 foot height, which the state then turned to 13 eight at that. That's the state. And walkers onto the side of timber, you cannot get through the side of the bridge unless you've got something hanging out. That bridge doesn't get hit nearly at all. I say nearly because if I look at that, I was thinking somebody went through in the back home and hit the top of it. Why? I don't know. But the other three bridges, in 18 years of me doing public works, all three of them, one portal was destroyed by either a tree spade, a car road, a drunk driver, Todd Casson. I believe there was a drunk driver too, Ron Thompson, took the whole side out of it in the Rust Belt. So we're talking 14 to 16,000 dollars worth of damage to a bridge in that time. Now probably 25, 30. So we can hold them accountable, at least that's a start. But boy, I mean, I was taught in driver's ed, if you had an accident, you had to stop or report it. What is it with hitting a bridge, taking a real thought, you know, off a vehicle and saying, oh, jeez, let's get out of here before the fine begins? I, I don't understand. Why should we have to do that? Or we have to?
Thank you.
I disagree with the removing of the nothing in tow. Accidents happen to great drivers all the time. I think it opens, as you said, it opens up the bridges to more damage possibilities, even by just a simple accident. You never know what's gonna happen. Also, a lot of people don't realize the additional weight they're carrying when they are towing equipment or even, if it was the only way to get out of town, that would be one thing, but it's not. There are multiple ways out of town that do not involve a bridge. There are multiple ways out of town that do not involve a bridge.
Mark Johnson, Swansea Lake Road, I just really dare to sign it again, because that's what I do. Letter height is a math. People can see a certain height letter from a certain distance. And there's a reason the stop sign doesn't say, "Take your foot off the accelerator and put it on the brake," it just says, "Stop," because too much, nobody's gonna read. So the design of the signs, I think, is important, letter height is important, it's so that people can, it speaks to people as they approach, and hopefully, like I said before, we'll have detour signs so that it doesn't have to happen. That's all. And I, and I would donate my time to help design signs, if it wasn't a state, if it's not a state issue, I'd be happy to do that.
Kyle Proto, again. Lee was saying that in eighteen years of the L I accidents, I've lived within a mile of the Crescent Bridge for thirty-plus years of my life, drive over it multiple times a day, now I live between the Thompson Crescent Bridge. Has there ever been any thought of just closing them and making them historical sites? Just adequate parking lots for people to park and enjoy the bridge? Just open them to pedestrians and bicycles, and then that would eliminate the people overweight on it, that would eliminate any of that. If you're gonna, because if you're gonna impose five-hundred-dollar fines for a weight limit to over half the registered cars in town, you might think about closing them anyway.
It'd be easier for the fire department.
Well, I'm just saying, like, in the article, it says town vehicles are allowed to go over town pickups, but my pickup's not. Is that because the town pickup weighs less than my pickup, or? I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking what, or because the fire truck's got its lights on, less weight?
I don't, I would say like the three-ton limit, you know, what factors into that is that over time, you know, if it was five tons, the engineer's saying that over time, constant five-ton traffic would, you know, be detrimental to the bridge, and so they lowered it to three. I'm just saying, throwing out numbers, so I think that might be the issue with, yeah, maintenance vehicles, you know.
I'm not insane, but three days this week, I've heard of the Crescent Bridge on the way home.
Yeah.
Three days this week, here, two sedans on the bridge at the same time.
Yeah.
So that's the same problem, right?
Yeah.
We're fixed that.
Another week.
Little citizen, you brought up about somebody hitting the bridge, just keep down the law. We had an incident the other night, Joe, can you explain to me what happened the other night with that truck that hit the bridge and the officer went to his home, right?
Uh, the RV?
I don't, this one right here, they hit this bridge the other night, and somebody followed the guy, right?
Yeah, from North Carolina, he was identified, we went, located him, he was confused about where he was going, was following GPS, and I was paying more attention to GPS than the signage, and unfortunately, he hit the bridge.
So, on that incident now, do we, is there any, do, do we find him, do we say...
Yes, he was, she was lactation, and he was...
He has to get lactation.
Got insurance.
That's the, that's what we do now when that happens. So he'll end up paying for that damage.
Insurance company, bro.
His insurance company. I just wanted to know what, what we do now.
So Lee, I just wanted to bring up again, you know, the accident, the biggest one that happened, I think, on this bridge, and said, well, you, you know I remember that one well, because I think the camera is a great idea. When that accident happened, I was standing on the front lawn, the guy drove through the pickup truck with a big trailer on the back and had a forklift that was eleven feet high, the, the part of the forklift, he took out the front part of the bridge, kept going, took out the other side of the bridge, and he was gonna keep going. I jumped in my pickup truck and drove over all of that wood to catch him and cut him off on the road that goes to the right there, whatever the name was. Yeah, Winchester, yeah, up to Winchester Road. And I cut him off, and I had already had a state trooper on the phone talking to him, and he happened to be coming the other way and met me right there where I cut him off. Otherwise, that guy would have been gone, and nobody would have ever known what happened to the bridge or who did it.
Took out the whole gable end.
Yeah, he took out both gable ends on the bridge, but, and some timbers up top, too. But I, I think it's a real important thing to have the cameras and also stop signs, that's, that's my biggest, biggest thing right there, so.
So, I would say that, whatever, but I don't...
Anytime we have, yeah, that has played for us repairs. Trouble with, you know, it's, it's constant. When I first started, you know, if you're old and remember Goldsmith, Goldsmith's looked up the hill, and we do our minor repairs and repairs. They had boards all painted on the bridge. They come down and tell me, somebody just hit the bridge. They had to fix it. But that, that was another issue, too, because when that bridge was rebuilt in ninety-five, they did the, the typical bridge course in the bridge was not all the way out to the edge, so if you looked over, if your tires went down, once your tires went down off the, the bridge strips, you went into the side of the bridge, tore out the boards and the over. When we, we built the floor, we built the floor further out so you can't do it on. And that's the way, pressing way, they did, we did that. It used to be when I grew up, three-foot strips for your tires, that's it. So...
But also the height.
The tractor trailer went over.
Now it's all the way across, you don't fall off.
We learned.
I was also considering, like, there, there should be an informational aspect to this as well, because a lot of people don't know how much their vehicle weighs, a lot of people don't realize how tall their vehicles may be or what they have in their vehicles may be. So I've seen other bridges in other states where they have, like, maybe a safety bar before you get, if you hit this bar, you can't go through the bridge, or even just like, flags that come down, so, and then there's some type of system where you can know if you don't clear that, you can't continue on. And the other thing is, is maybe an informational session on a Saturday or a Sunday, you know, come, find out how much your vehicle weighs, you know, we can get a vehicle weight machine, and, and it's just information for people so that they know, it takes out the question part.
Try out your registration. Always used to...
The GBRW is on your registration.
Right, that's the point.
See, I don't know that.
The curb weight, the curb weight of your vehicles on the inside of your driver's outdoor door.
Sure, yeah.
Yes?
So a couple of things.
Sorry, progress.
Progress, I'm very much against taking down the signs that say nothing in tow, because one of the things we haven't talked about is the pedestrians that are on the bridge, and I don't know about you, but I've gone through that bridge, walking, when a truck comes through with a pontoon boat on a trailer, not fun. So I think taking down any signs about anything in tow is, we need to keep those signs up. My other question is, and maybe clarify this for me, did I understand correctly that we cannot use the cameras to enforce the weight? Okay.
Unless there's damage.
Unless there's damage. So repeated use, day by day by day, is causing damage. What is the plan to enforce the weight? If we can't use the cameras to do it, what's the plan?
We start catching people in fighting.
When are they doing that? Because I have cameras, I don't see the police stopping anybody for that heavy trucks. And now, last Friday night at eight minutes of five o'clock, the cars pulled up in front of my house, it was a Swansea police cruiser, he was stopped in traffic, waiting for people to come across the bridge very politely. Right behind him was an oversized truck pulling a giant trailer, an equipment trailer. I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt and say he stopped him when they hooked up to the other side, because I couldn't see him. But I want to know, are they doing anything? Are they instructed to do anything? What good are the cameras if we're not enforcing them?
Well, we do have officers down there, and they are enforcing it. Obviously, when they're stationed down there, people take all of their groups.
When they're stationed down there, you have them on the other end, you have them by the stop sign at Matthews Road, you need to have them on Causeway Road.
Oh, referred him to Causeway.
The day of the last town wide guard seal, we had an officer, somebody, was on Causeway Road, they were there maybe ten minutes, someone went across the bridge with a truck, towing a boat, they went after them, they stopped them, that person was under suspension out of Massachusetts. So the truck got towed and the trailer got towed.
Unfortunately, probably took the officer out, enforcement detail for a while there. Well, it encourages paperwork, right?
It encourages paperwork, but I guess my point is, you're gonna see it on this side of the bridge. The other side of the bridge, you're just getting people who are stopping at the stop or not stopping at the stop sign at Matthews Road.
I think one thing we need to do before we can start enforcing the weight limit on the bridge, is figure out what that weight, weight limit's for. There's as many vehicles as the GBRW is over three tons, but the curb weight is under three tons. So I guess we gotta figure out what weight we're gonna go with before we can start enforcing.
Only, and like I said, it's set by the state, so if, I would say the vehicle at the time, so if it's a half-ton, or I don't even want to say half-ton, a small Toyota Ranger pickup truck, and you put two tons of batteries at the back of the thing, and you can see it going down the road with a rear bumper dragging, I think that would be an incentive to the officer to say, "That's overweight," even though the registration and the pit tag says what the weight is. It's over six ton, or three tons on the bridge, so.
But in here, it says the GBRW, that's why I'm wondering, I guess there's gonna be some students on that, and I'm sure the officer's gonna get the same questions, and they're not gonna want it, or have any, even have answers. So it'd be good to have them have clarified information before they start issuing tickets.
So, just, just for note, there's not a municipal or town police agency in the state of New Hampshire that's equipped to, to weigh trucks or cars, or anything like that. The DOT, or the Division of State Police, and their truck unit will, but that's for commercial vehicles. So you're kind of asking the police department to do something that's almost impossible for them, and have it stand up legally. They can stop them and give them a warning, but if someone was to challenge a ticket given by one of the chief's officers for being overweight, they're gonna have no leg to stand on, because you said he had a load of gravel in the back of his three-quarter ton pickup. It, it's, it's just not feasible, and it's too much to ask of them. And to make them certified to do it would be a lot more money and a lot more training than I think the town people would be willing to spend for a couple tickets a year on the covered bridges. So the simplest way to do that is while you have the ordinance open, if, if you really want to tackle it, and you're gonna have to have another public hearing, is to make those bridges passenger car only. And it's simple as that, if they're registered commercially, then they get a ticket. Otherwise, if they're registered as a passenger vehicle, there's nothing else you can do about it. So it's, it's kind of unfair to bash the police department here when they don't have the mechanisms to enforce what you're asking them to enforce, so. I guess they are listed as passenger cars only except for the slight bridge.
Well, the Crescent Bridge is a four pickup vehicle.
Well, and I think it, it's a passenger registered vehicle today, that's light trucks, which, you know, mine's a one-time dump truck, so I think everybody would be okay with it.
Right, right.
Lori Johnson, I just have a quick question. I see the Schwanz truck, I've seen that go over the bridge many times, so if I see it going over the bridge, and I take a picture of it, and I have a license plate number and the date and all that, can I do anything with it?
I would refer to the chief, but I would say, only if there's damage.
Only if there's damage.
One of the gold Schwanz, maybe? I don't know.
There was a tractor trailer trying to come over this one here about three months ago, and I blocked it, I didn't get it out.
I could rat out many of businesses here, just from seeing the trucks that have gone over it daily, and, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and do that, but there are some businesses in town that use it daily with big trucks.
Sell the businesses.
What's that?
Sell the business.
Yeah.
Can you speak to that, though, chief? If someone sends you, all right, I've got a picture of this truck that, you know, say it's a dump truck, it's clearly oversized, overweight, and it's halfway across the bridge, if they send that to you, can you do anything with that picture in terms of enforcement?
Well, obviously, officers can observe violations, so he'd be at a deficit, but we definitely follow up and speak to the company and the operator, the truck vehicle.
Lisa.
Lisa Lauren, again, okay, so, on the average, probably ten to fifteen commercial vehicles a day show up on my cameras, so should I start sending those pictures? Because it's every day, and a lot of them are locals.
Really?
Okay?
You crashed my email, I'll send them to you, so.
I know, I crashed everybody's email, but, you know, it's not a couple-ticket a day issue. It's multiple, and they're big, you know? Certain company from town that delivers dumpsters, takes their truck through the bridge with a dumpster on the other way, you know? But no one does it. And I guess my other question is, can we ask for help from the state DOT?
We did, we had one about a month ago.
No, I mean, the enforcement.
I don't think DOT...
That was with the scales.
I don't think DOT does any enforcement, just global districts.
I notified the troop C, and they forgot the troops there on a couple occasions, but I definitely have to have a commercial unit with scales to try to enforce that.
So we have a town ordinance, the sheriff's department, write a ticket to someone based on our town ordinance.
Brian?
Yeah, so I think by hearing in layman's terms, really, is cars, passenger cars and pickup trucks that are registered as passenger cars, which would be everything, the pickup trucks, those aren't the concern, those aren't the issue, and we really aren't terribly concerned about them, even if they're towing something small, if they're not causing damage, right? If they cause damage, that's when we're gonna click into these camera things and start doing some, potentially writing some tickets.
I think we were waiting to tell you something, or, the only thing we can use the cameras for is for damage.
That's what I just said. So that's the only real change, I mean, this isn't worded that way, but hearing the people talk, the only real concern people are saying, I think, is passenger cars and pickup trucks. If Sally, Joe wants to go through there with her utility trailer with a bag of leaves on it, it's been one lane, nothing in tow for decades, this isn't anything new.
The fines are...
Right, but I think what we're hearing is, they're not gonna go and sit there and find people that are going over, over limit. If there's damage and there's a reason to get called there, that's a different story.
Well, it sounds like we just got somebody with a trailer towed, person from Massachusetts that's suspended. Yeah, I think, I think the officer out, I think, dispose of that situation.
I, I understand it. What even drives the point further, that they're not gonna be tagged unless they're driving their car across there with a bag of trash, because they're twelve-ways, sixty-two-hundred pounds, hey, they would have no way to know it, and the ticket would never hold up in the first place. So this is really about the damage. Well, that's a different conversation.
I don't know, just a danger fire a bit alone, a month and a half ago, a truck coming over here with the trailer on it, got to the end of the bridge, there were two cars waiting up in front of our houses, right in front of the fire department, the trailer unhitched from the truck when it got to this side of the bridge and hit the two cars on the other side. The trailer unhitched from the truck when it got to this side of the bridge and hit the two cars on the other side of the bridge. So I think we need to really try and enforce the in tow. I've seen too many accidents that it's done damage like that. There was another one where a guy had a trailer on the back of his truck, and a car was halfway through the bridge. He went through and kept going through and took out the whole side of the lady's car, wiped it out completely, and damaged the bridge at the same time. So the in tow is a big concern as far as I'm concerned.
Of course.
It's a very big concern. It has to be addressed.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying that in tow is not a new thing. We've been dealing with this for decades, because it's been the law for decades.
Uh, just two things, Mark Johnson again. All right, what's your schedule with Damon Thompson?
Weather permitting, it's hoping to be done this week.
Oh, okay, great, because I'm gonna try and handle the detour of that. If we're not helping these guy, the, I say guys, if we're not helping these drivers avoid these bridges with appropriate signage at the entry roads, there's entries to all these bridges. There's only so many ways you can get to them. And if the signs were placed appropriately, that said, fines up to a thousand, as Steve was saying, or two thousand, whatever the jargon is, go this way, you know? We need to help the drivers not get in that situation. And I think that that would minimize it at least. And, uh, and have those, have the detour route, uh, uh, be, uh, explain what type of vehicles have it at that, at that stage, as well as at the bridge. You know, so that you're having, you know, no big box things, no, whatever. You can even have cartoon pictures, not cartoons, but silhouette pictures, anything. But, uh, I think the detour signage is extremely important. That's just my take on it. Thank you.
You know, Mark, I think Mark has unbelievable ideas here. I, I think that's a key thing. I think that's extremely key. But I also think, this didn't happen overnight. This has been happening for too many years and nothing being done. So now everybody in town just knows, "You can go over that. Don't mind the sign." And there's a problem here. We've never done nothing for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and we're gonna have to start somewhere. And I think we have to attack it aggressively, and we have to pull people over, and we have to say, even if we have to hire someone, stand there at the bridge for two weeks and say, "No more going over the bridge. No more of that," and get it out there into the public then. "No more going over the bridge with tow." We've done it. We allowed it too long, and we grew our own monster. We have a monster now because we let it happen. Simple. That's what I get at. But I think Mark's ideas is, don't let the people get in front of it and say, "Oh shit, how'd I get here?" Let them take the right and the left before then, so they go around it. I think you got great ideas, and the stop sign, I think, is great, too.
Well, so are the Walmart readers. I mean, we could have our own cool Walmart readers, you know, that are all here going, "Hey, no, yep, nope, yep," you know?
That's right. And I think we have to figure something out. We have to get it out into the town where everybody's aware of it now. They're busing everybody for going over the bridge. We're stopping it. Enough is enough now, right? The word gets out, right, and then it gets to talk in the town. Oh, Joe went over there and he got a five.
Do you spear through Troy? Nope, you know?
Yeah, that's no, you don't do that, right.
Right, you know?
That's no, you don't do that.
You don't spear through Troy, you know?
That's right, that's right. I knew that when I first moved here. Everybody told me.
So Jim, I think I know, can you answer my question before I ask you something? How did you get here to my house?
How did I get here to that?
Did you come across the Thompson Bridge? Is your truck over sixty-two hundred pounds?
I just found out tonight, so it's an hour's road away.
So, I think that's the lock, so we're good. I think that's the biggest issue is, am I gonna get a $500 ticket for driving my pickup truck to Market Avenue?
That's a good question.
Or do I gotta go all the way around town?
But I don't see the answer to that with the passenger vehicles thing, right? See, it's not like a passenger, is your truck considered a passenger vehicle?
But it's over three tons.
And, and I was playing semantics here, because we're talking about loads on trucks, right? We all know, the real, the real damage to the bridge and why the weight limits are there are for, you know, the one-ton dumps that are being used commercially for landscaping, or small deliveries, or whatever. That, that's really the focus, and that's, that's what's gonna hurt the weight-wise. So it's kinda playing games with as far as if I put a load of gravel in my truck, or a ton of pellets in my truck. You know, that's, it's not who you're looking for. And I would say, before you, before you have the police officers sit there, who we all know, and it was talked about when I walked in the door, are already short-staffed, and they're answering calls, um, and they, they have the minimum deployment issues and everything else, get the signs up first, you know? What good is the education thing if, if we don't have a way to direct the people around it? So, the signage is a great idea, um, and then if you wanna, I would suggest, in an overtime fashion, if, if the chief's guys aren't already burnt out from covering shifts, um, put them out there on extra details. But, you know, I, I would take into consideration, there's a lot of other stuff going around in this town. If you just look at the log once in a while, sometimes being overweight or having, towing a landscaping trailer through the bridge isn't what, what's important, so.
Does it have to be a police officer there? Would you use a, could we use a security, somebody out there? Could, is that possible, Steve or Joe? Would you answer that?
I'll do that.
Could you put somebody out there, just to not get tickets out, but say, "Hey, no, we're gonna, you can't do that. You can't come over here with that."
So what about a big stop sign in your hand to go out and put the signs?
Well, I had traffic in my pocket, speeding traffic, and I hired a security company, and they parked their vehicle, and I paid for three months, and I stopped all the speeders in there, because I sat the security out there, and he drove to the house, and he walked up and said, "You just came in here too fast. You can't do that no more." I'm just wondering, couldn't we do similar to something like that?
Well, I'd have to see the proposal, have to see all the elements of how we wanna do that, so you have a lot of liability issues. So we have to approach it, the venue that's, you know, appropriate.
I think that. I just wonder if we can get around it some other way, because I, I agree with Steve. I know how shocked into we are, and I know it's hard to just put a policeman there all day and night, but I really feel that's where we're at now. I mean, we gotta let the town know. We gotta get it out there.
Put a trapdoor in the bridge.
Set the weight aside. They go in rhythm.
Right, I see. So we had, a number of years ago, a team was gonna go to the e-ticket cameras, and the taxpayers overwhelmingly shut it down. Didn't even have a chance. So e-ticket cameras are allowed in the state of New Hampshire.
So we had to change the law to identify a vehicle that will allow the police to identify a vehicle with a cam. And the only, and the reason we did it, to add covered bridges, was because af, I think after nine eleven, Homeland Security put cameras on the major overpasses and bridges for DOT, the interstate stuff. So, that's why we added bridges. I don't believe they can, they can, you can do plate recognition, right? There's e-ticket, there's no camera, tickets, no camera e-tickets? Add a snoring.
I've done layco stuff, and it's real important. The whole point of it is to educate people. And you have to be inoffensive, unaggressive, not in your face, you know, you have to add, just, it's, it's just to inform people, um, and why it's important. And even if you did, and it pays like $10 an hour, and even if it's temporary, it might be a nice idea to educate people that way. You know, by saying, "We're just trying to help people redirect themselves when they're towing." You know, so when you see someone towing something, you know, it's just a thought, works for the boats.
Well, what authority would you have?
No, no. But at least it's not the police doing it, and it's giving them information, um, and then, you know, you can shoot the tires out of that car.
Lisa?
Uh, I appreciate that the police have a lot of other things to do, other than monitoring other trucks on the bridge. To bring it back to the stop sign, signage issue, it really should be a stop sign on, on both sides of that Crescent Bridge. Because now we've got, and, and if you don't live there, you don't, oops, you don't see this on a daily basis, but what happens is, someone will yield, like they're supposed to. Someone else will come up behind them and start screaming and swearing at them, because they're yielding. And someone else back here will pull out and around, and now you've got two trying to go through the bridge at the same time, because they thought they yielded too long. So there's that going on, because everyone is in such a hurry, and no one's patient. And, the police chief, can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was an incident a couple months ago that someone flashed a gun at someone else, because they yielded to traffic. So it's not just a little issue, a little issue. Yeah, it is.
That's what we should address, the, the signs, because a few times, because those are not our signs.
I understand, yeah.
And the snap, put them in, and we, we talked, I don't know, I think you were here, or I thought you were here, when we talked to Frank, London Brainerd brought up, we brought it up, and we felt that it would've been better to either have no signs or two stop signs, and he spoke in favor of the yield. And we use a similar context that you just, you have something on part, but, but the, but the other of what does happen from a practical standpoint is that the person yielding doesn't realize they don't need to yield, uh, because the other side has a stop sign. So we, we did bring it up, but we don't have the jurisdiction over that, other than go to the Traffic Bureau and make recommendations.
I will say that the state police are honoring people talking down that road as well, because I have them happily following me from high school to my grandmother's house, which is short of the bridge. And he was very disappointed when I backed my driveway to my mother.
Rick, I'll be showing you. So my understanding is the state would have to put the stop signs and stuff?
Any signage, I'm sorry.
So we have to adjust what's going on with the state?
Well, we have the opportunity to make a presentation or request of the Traffic Bureau, and then it would filter down to the local DOT, but it's just a multi-layered process. And we, we talked about lit signs for speeding, for speeding, and, and all of that. And it's just, it's just a multi-layered process that we have to go through with no guarantee that we'll be successful. We're hopeful that we'll be able to post the signs for the cameras. But again, it's for the, for the Crescent Bridge, because it's a state road.
Well, with the, returning to the detour sign question. So the state would have to authorize, if we put signs up here by the church to head down to Damon Thompson Road if you were driving anything that was not compliant, that has to be authorized by the state, though?
This would be a town ordinance.
This would be, oh, okay, so it's only on, only on state roads?
So can I put some stop signs down this bridge?
Maybe, drop bar.
It's worked pretty well. For the forty years I've been here, there's no stop signs. It seems to be more respectful at this bridge than, than the Crescent Bridge. But, but I think our point to Frank was, whatever's on one side should be on the other.
You know, we're not remembering, too, by putting these cameras up, that might deter people. That might be like, "Oh, they got cameras now." So that might solve some of our problems in itself, not just for damage, you know? Because now people are gonna be aware. They've got cameras here, so these guys that are towing might, that might help the whole problem a lot, just by doing, doing.
You know what, Jimmy, what you're saying, we could put dummy cameras on the rest of it. I'll buy them, you know, if that happens.
No, but if we didn't see the roof, I would push it. No, I, I, Mark, I would push it. If we, if we saw it, I would push it, and I think Bill would slide on the same page. We could find the money to see if we could get them all camera. Because I think cameras are gonna, Bill says we could get a sign, and Bill says cameras. Yeah, so we put the sign on cameras now. I think it's gonna slow down speeders, towers, everything. Overweight, with good signage, the cameras, I think we're gonna put a dent in it.
Mark, the, the reason that we focused on Crescent was because it was the, the area with the most incidents and, and the cars, and the most, most substantial, the most trafficked. But we will go, go through the budgetary process with regard to the other bridges. I think I'll imagine that earlier for next year.
And our IT provider, remember, we only do one, because it is kind of experimental.
Oh, that's right, I forgot you mentioned that.
Yeah, but we plan to do.
This comes. Has anybody approached the DOT? Because I believe it's still in front of our wall, that's still state road, right? Has anybody approached the DOT about putting a sign there, or even turning down those crossroads, about tractor trailers coming on the A next to right? So can you straight to Damon Thompson Road?
We had them in here two weeks ago.
Yeah, I just asked them to.
Yeah, but I don't, Mark said, I don't, when Mark said.
No, but we were talking about putting some signs away, so that people are familiar, they can take alternate routes.
I think there is a sign on that corner, at my house with the height sign. That catches the smart driver. And it'll stop, and I saw one there, there are many smart drivers. Most of them are running down through, and you wanna see the fun, is where they get the Canadians and all the power guys down here, and the big storm out here. What's the best route to get back to the public service, right? Right down by my house. Whole land, a whole land of them, those guys will leave.
So we have notified the online mapping, like I was saying earlier, that Google now notices restrictions on those roads. But some of the other MapQuest and whatnot, I just don't have any.
Did you say that it is on Google and MapQuest now?
Google, uh, we've notified, yeah. Google said that there were no restrictions on their, on roads to the Swansea, so we put them on. We're the covered bridges, so.
Oh, that's cool.
That's how long it's gonna take for them to get it on there.
And people look up one time to go to Home Depot, and they don't look again, right, or so, because they, they know, "I'll come up thirty-two and go right across the bridge." Good public hearing? We're working on it. Thank you for your input.
Lot of good stuff. That was, that was so worth it, with Mark, Frank, everybody that put in input. I thought you guys had a lot of good ideas here. Mike made with some great ideas, so this is a good, good hammering, okay?
And nobody asked a question what the state's gonna do with the fines? That's good. We don't know.
What the state's gonna do with what?
We get the money, so be careful going home. I thought that was just a damn.
That's how you're gonna write the ticket, right?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jim. You go out to Massachusetts, you take possession of a vehicle.
Table, until.
All right, go to new business under B for West Swansea Water Company, action items, AMC West Swansea Committee Chair. And all together.
Ben Brown, Underwood Engineers, and I are meeting with Rick, Department of Environmental Services, I guess a week or so ago. He was, wanted to make sure we knew about the, uh, award letter in terms of the low interest loan, forty percent principal forgiveness. They could mention what your deals and those, and basically to be clear that if we're not going to move forward with that project, the state would like to allocate those funds for another project, so he wanted to kind of make sure we had some of these items listed here on our radar. I told them they're working on that committee, and this is one of the major things that they're gonna be doing. Committee, this is one of the major things that are being viewed. So it was, it was positive, but it's, it's getting late early at some points, so we want to make sure we have these items clear and make sure I'm clear on the board, it's kind of consensus of the direction we're going. So, so some of the items we had, uh, that we had on here was just consensus that we are proceeding with a one article for this potentially. Again, obviously, find out new information, you can always change your mind, but, but that's still current. He, he recommended that it's good advice, we think you don't want to get the one article approved and then have the company say, oh, no, we actually think it's worth some new value. So, he mentioned having a person sale agreement, so we worked with council on the Plum Act, regarding the sale of the company, to make sure we understand the prices. And that was clearly outlined. Uh, one of the questions was, one of the big, major capital assets would be a storage tank. And he's wondering, well, do we know either generally or specifically where we'd want to look at? Underwood recommended either up on Leonard Farm Road or on Christian Hill Road, which I got the money for the storage tank. Again, I told her I think that's something that the committee is gonna look at. But he said, now, again, you don't want to get this approved and then find out, you don't have any landowners, uh, and you don't have any place to put the storage tank. So they mentioned that. And then, uh, I'm not discussing, it was something he suggested, but I, that's something that I came up with, was coming up with a preliminary agreement with the current operator, which is Smoke and Plumbing Heating. You know, we don't want the keys to turn over when you bought the system and then, alright, they disappeared, now congratulations, you're running a water company. So I think they're doing a fine job with that, and see if we can get creative with that, and continue to operate it, so. Yeah, threw, threw a lot of information at you, but, uh, we just want to make sure, you know, we got about three months till the end of the year, make sure we're clear on what direction we're going on.
I definitely think it's the right path. We, we've got potential difficulties if the system goes down with all the people that are on it. Especially some of the larger multi, multi unit facilities. Uh, we've done a lot of work underwood, and that's a tremendous amount of work until now. This is full speed ahead, in my opinion. And, and if, if we're looking at long-term growth of Swansea, this is where it's gonna happen. This is where our best land is. So, we need, in my opinion, we need to continue to grow, we have to, to make it possible.
We're talking about that discussion, so that we talked about on week ten, the water system.
Correct.
Yeah. I just was a little behind, and I'm sorry, we, we gotta talk about this in a week, probably.
Ten years off the mark.
Really?
So, so I don't wanna say probably twenty-nine, probably. How long, how long discussion has been about the West Swansea Water?
What is it, the West Swansea, what kind of wells are there?
Uh, they have a pressure tank, somebody might have in their basement. Air pressure keeps the water pressure, that's basically what somebody uses there. We're looking at taking over the system, putting it in an elevated tank, so that even if the power goes out, gravity, gravity will feed fire pressure.
But what kind of wells are they, are they, are they drilled wells that we're working out of? Are they drilled in there?
Gravel.
Are they gravel, gravel wells?
Eighty feet.
Those two that they're using now, side by side, they're eighty feet deep gravel pack, they're a huge area down in those.
Big wash for all your round and.
And some to the wells down there. And that's just a pump down there.
Safe three hundred and fifty minute. Oh, that's, that's a large waterfall. Yeah, I think it actually goes up to me, this. Goes pretty far, it's nice, endless water.
That could flood water. But, yeah. There's a third well out of the bigger one. That was a five hundred, we just sit down, and they're not running, not running half.
But what was the problem with the building right there that, about, it just made it on water, is it pressure? Was it because of pressure, the, the new apartments in Silicon Meadows?
That's the storage.
Storage cats there.
They didn't let them go on there, but, but this is source capacity for the size of the tank they had, and they need five thousand gallons there. To add on more, uh, I think the state requirements would be provide storage for another.
Oh, that's what the problem was, because that's.
Yeah, it's not.
I thought it was, I thought it was a water thing. It has nothing to do with that, it's, I get it.
When they wanted those wells, remember when they ran the hell down there in the morning? In the morning, they have, they have seven die pedals down there, four inch pipes going into those tunnels there. Full blast, all of them, as well as wet finish nails there, which washes off all that stuff, and, and overall.
Wow.
Lot of water.
We were talking about putting a water storage tank up high in the town, and the gra- we've got that full in the, that gravity feed's on blow up areas.
Wells would pop up to it. And that side of the river, or the side of the, that side of the river, they have, and, and this is a water here, this side here.
Maybe the Italian, California, Brooklyn, there's a stabbing over there, they're a big tub of water. You know, maybe you might take it on, that would be good, that whole area does condos. I'm a little bit.
Speaking of consensus?
Yeah.
Consensus is one.
Yeah, we'll stay ahead, we'll stay ahead.
Very good.
Picture, didn't that? Yeah. Right. Yeah, exactly, get that consensus.
I know.
Uh, perfectly.
Through this.
Yeah, so, and then, discussed, uh, again, a year or two ago, about creating, maybe look at the possible creation of TIF district passing from the mining, financing this year, uh, in this area. With one of the projects, not the only one, but one of the projects being, um, related to this, related to water. So I've listed what I think are, uh, questions that should, or working with the rest of the staff, but, uh, if I, if I miss anything, or if anything on here, that is a priority, that would, uh, that would be helpful. I've also listed, uh, some, first, most of which I've talked to, he's, uh, he's still living in South Dakota. He is still living in South Dakota, yes, yeah, so he's not arrested, but, um, TIF districts, especially once the actual district is created, there's, there will be a TIF advisory, maybe there is for a separate guy, and, uh, you can't have non-residents as well.
Not for long, once.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty good.
Districts in past, it was excited to read the sign.
I didn't know, did you guys sit down?
Until I read it. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You picked a guy that didn't have to make a motion on this, right?
I can't, no, I don't have.
Go ahead. Motion made, seconded, create the West Swansea passing from the finance committee, that's code line, and then, on the waiver?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, three of us.
Very good.
I was looking for another committee, right? And I quoted the charter.
We've already put in five. I know, that's what I said, you were looking for another one.
I didn't see, there's a list of the names. I didn't see that.
Bill, you have it, can you talk to Kenny?
Yeah, George will. Item D, MS four thirty-four, update the revenues. This is okay?
Just as a teaching opportunity, Mr. Tefasta, so we talked about periodicity throughout the year, MS four is a useful service forms. And so like when we have a budget drafted, it's going to the county, we have to fill out an MS, that's six, three, six, and after it gets go to the two, three, two. So we have, we, we know what these are, because they're part of our normal cycle, but, uh, so we had the budget pass, obviously, earlier this year. And then, so this time of year, we get ready to set the tax rate, we have the MS one, which is the summary of all the value, now all the assessed value.
Yep.
Uh, so based on, you know, doing a revaluation this year, so the MS one is not finished yet. But the other piece is we can't, can't change your budget, the budget was approved by the voters, there's no change unless you have, especially, in general, can't you? But every year, they get, the state gives you an opportunity, at this time of year, to update revenues if you want to. Uh, so maybe like the state revenues came in much higher than we expected, and that's, you know, a little bit of that. So usually, we don't do too much adjusting at this point, but we have an opportunity. So this is kind of the first checking with the board, um, about where, where the revenues are looking, and we talked about the revenues for a mid-year point. So this is just kind of, we get into fall, we get close to the tax rate, rate setting. Got some estimates based on, uh, what we were projecting, based on the budget, but with the MS one changing, with the reval, they're gonna, that, we know the tax rates are gonna change. Normally, we'd be saying, yeah, it's probably gonna be about this, but we really don't know with the rebound, but, so they're just, you know, it's. So this is an opportunity, if we wanted to change the revenues, I think for the most part, we could stay, um, on it. Yeah, it's just kind of your preview that a tax rate is coming.
Yeah.
The review schedule? Mr. Hello, here's a, I'm thinking, I'm, since you're. I told you, I have a review ever sent you. Any questions you have?
So you cancel by sixteen?
The, the schedule, okay?
Yeah.
What's the nature of any companies?
It is active, I said, it's a good entry. That might be a good one, too. October thirty, or the thirty-first, yeah, the day you want to spend. Just some classes and stuff.
Look at the schedule, if you're interested.
Don't we have to keep me updated with that? And maybe I can see some classes today?
Tell them if you want.
Hello? A and A? We're gonna bump up recreation.
Yes, actually, I.
Yeah.
Is the value of just discussing the concept?
We can.
Sure. Oh, good.
Basically, the concept was, um, we'd have a few members in time, and we just feel like it'd be more successful as like a, as a volunteer association versus like a committee that, you know, has to write all the rules and things. It's not really an oversight committee, it's always kind of be like a support committee, so it functions better just as friends, like a, versus not a committee. So that's.
How many people are left on?
I believe two.
Only two?
Is that because we didn't pay attention? We added people on, or she didn't ask for them, or we just.
It's a combination factor, so we did have two, uh, two resigned, sort of going at the same time, uh, this summer. Because she was happy to give you some, she's physically keen. So, I think one of them served for that all the, the reasons they started, so.
Had a lot of issues that has resolved themselves. Richardson Park, it's all good, ground field, but, you know. But, I wouldn't, the only thing I didn't see in that is, maybe we should update the charge to save recreation for all ages. Maybe get some seniors to provide some, but, as far as senior recreation. Just, it seems like it was geared really for kids, but.
Well, at that point, we were just trying to, you know, kids program, and then start to go all the way, so. Throw just a camp and, so, so. Apparently, I think it was successful, but.
Yeah.
It impacts the, the volunteers, so.
Do you feel confident there'd be enough people that could come in to support her, and some of the, and, and organizational structure to, to ensure?
I guess I wouldn't say, because she kept that, I, I wouldn't want to speak for her.
You feel comfortable with that?
I wouldn't want to speak for her.
I'm asking you.
I feel comfortable, that's good.
That you obviously.
I'm not gonna be there, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna start, scare girls before, before that, so. But she seems to have a pretty good memory.
A street of update?
I think we've had, so, good, first of all, it's, uh.
Public input?
I think we had a lot of public inputs.
We had a lot.
I think we had a lot.
We have enough publics.
Yes. Let's start with, say, start with A for annual soul promotion compensation, but. Here's a, a couple of, the customer.
Why not?